This conference will now be recorded.
GL Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Harwich Board of Appeals on December 9, 2020, opened at 7:00 PM is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in this order. We have 19 people logged on here. If anybody is on with audio only and wants to get on live here with the picture and aren't sure how to do it, you can go to the town website on, under, I think it's Boards and Committees, Board of Appeals, go to our website, click on the Agenda, and there will be a link you can click on, or you can simply copy the line there, the address line, and then put it into your browser and get here to us. We'll have the cases presented in order of the Agenda.
All right.
And I'll ask everybody, if you're not speaking, please to put it on mute because we do pick up all the background noise. And tonight, we will have Mr. Donahue acting as our clerk. I'm Dave Ryer, the chairman. I'll ask the other members of the board to introduce themselves, please. Al?
Alexander Donahue.
Brian? Brian, you got to unmute.
Brian Sullivan.
Jamie?
James Armstrong.
Chris?
Chris Murphy.
And Shayla.
Shayla Delaney, Secretary.
Okay, welcome all. We will take the cases in order. We'll have the presentation by the applicant, then the board will ask questions, and we'll open it up for public comment. Okay, Al, if you could read in our first case, please.
Case number 2020-40, Jonathan and Sarah Benneka, trustees of the Benneka Living Trust through their agent. Attorney Sarah Toronto Flores have applied for special permit or, in the alternative, a variance to demolish and replace a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling and residential accessory structure on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. The application is pursuant to the Code of Town of Harwich 325-22, Table 2, Area Regulation 325-14Q, as set forth in MGL Chapter 48, Section 6. Property is located at 2 Quaston Lane, MAP 7 Parcel, A50-0-R in the RH1 zoning district.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Toronto Flores has asked that we continue the hearing until our next meeting. She and the applicants are going to conduct additional neighborhood outreach to our next hearing. I think that's great. I think the applicants generally are well advised to do neighborhood outreach on any of these projects. So I would move, I'm going to move that we continue case 2020-40 to 7:00 PM on, I think it's January 27, 2021, will be our next meeting, so we'll be the first case on that agenda. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
For Mr. Armstrong, any discussion by the board? Okay, all in favor of granting the motion to continuance?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, the case will be continued as the first case at our next meeting on January 27 of 2021. Okay, Al, you can call the next one.
Case number 2020-41, Craig LeBlanc of Cool Change LLC through their agent, Robert O'Neill of GenCon, has applied a variance from the requirements of 325-16 and 325-42L to create a lot for boat maintenance and repairs with structure to house these activities. The applicant pursuant to this requirement of MGL Chapter 48, Section 10, and the property is located at 2282 Route 28, MAP 12 Parcel, G2-1 in the CH-1 zoning district.
Okay, thank you. Who is presenting for the applicant?
That will be me, I'm Craig LeBlanc.
Okay.
Top left.
Okay, why don't you make your petition, if you would, please?
Okay. Well, thank you very much, folks, for taking the time tonight. So I'm Craig LeBlanc, the President and General Manager of Allen Harbor Marine Service. On the call with us, I have Stuart Clark, Civil Engineer from Green Seal Environmental, Steve Morell, Architect from GenCon, and a couple other members of the team. We're seeking a variance in a couple of areas for the front yard setback along Tyler Lane, which runs on the east side of this property, and then also for the parking setback from both Route 28 and Tyler Lane. This lot, if you've reviewed the plans, is challenging, to say the least, to several issues with the shape of it that are causing us the need to ask for these variances. It's truly a shape of a pork chop, if you will. It's a rectangular lot running from north to south, but then there's a pork chop part of it, the dogleg, if you will, runs to the west. Also have a couple of easements that impact what we're able to do as far as this particular building, both with a, there's a parking easement that is already in place with Villaroma Restaurant next door, and then there's also drainage easement across the northern edge of the rectangle part of it. So basically, looking for some relief there so that we're able to put up the building.
I want to shut this off. Got it on my phone, I can listen to it.
It's on your phone?
Yeah. I can't hear it though.
All right, I'll just keep going.
Yeah, go ahead, whoever just came on, if you could mute yourself, please. Okay, go ahead, Mr. LeBlanc.
Okay. So essentially, we're looking to make use of the usable part of this lot and put up a building for boat maintenance and storage, I'm sorry, not storage, boat maintenance, that'll allow for the best use of the space as far as what size boats need to fit in. The couple of notes, you know, important things to note, I would say, we're not going to be accessing the lot or the building from Tyler Lane at all. And even with the proposed width of the building, will still be some 20 feet in from the edge of Tyler Lane, which is, as you may or may not know, essentially a driveway to access the condominiums that are in the back there. It's a private way. And we, the parking setback, where, as I said, there's an existing easement there, but we will, we've met with the Villaroma folks and have a comfort level with them that the parking will work for both parties as it is already, you know, laid out in the easement going forward.
Okay. Go ahead, I didn't mean to stop.
No, no, that's okay. I don't know that I have, can certainly be willing to certainly answer some questions or clarify anything. That's really what we're looking for tonight.
Okay, I understand the shape of the lot, but you also have to show a hardship to get a variance. What's the hardship that justifies this board granting you a variance?
Well, the dogleg portion of the land is really unusable. It's very, it's long, but it's very narrow. So really, there isn't anything we can do with that. It runs behind Villaroma and the residents next to it. It's really an odd, odd shape. So we're limited there, we don't have any use for that part of it. And then the, get the width of the building in order to get boats inside, I'd love, my plan is to be able to fit six boats in at one time. I need the extra width running east to west encroaching on Tyler Lane.
Okay, is there anything you'd like to add before I open it up to the board?
I don't believe so. The parking easement, I believe you have a copy of that, one was submitted, is really, that's what's driving the location of the building. We have to keep the southern half of the lot open for parking, so that pushes the whole building to the north. And again, really limits where the building can be. So having to keep that whole space open really puts us, puts me in a box, and the building can really only go in one spot, which is where we have it proposed.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you, sir. Al, questions, comments?
Just to let the board know, I have two letters here that I think at least one of the individuals who's neighbor is actually online here. Her name is Linda Reed.
Yes.
And Linda had sent in a series of questions to the board that she would like answered. She's going to try to be online this evening, I do not know whether she's actually online. And the second one we have is from a gentleman who is a neighbor who is in favor of the project. So what's our pleasure? Would you like me to read in her questions to the boards? Or would you prefer that, wait and see if Linda's actually, she is listed as on and muted?
Is on, so why don't we wait until we open that up to the public and let her make her comments directly? And I don't have the second letter, but let's see if that neighbor is here. Otherwise, you keep track, and if not, we'll read the second letter into the record.
All right.
Do you have any comments yourself?
The only comment I have is the property certainly is of a rather unusual shape. It's my understanding that there is the easement, we're going to have 16 parking spaces, which I assume are going to be equivalent to the current parking spaces that the Villaroma uses at that lot. I don't know specifically what it was denied on, because I don't happen to have a denial letter. I didn't get one online.
The, I am, I stand corrected.
That's all right. Thank you, Shayla, I stand corrected.
Okay.
I do. The only question I had was with regard to the proposed septic system. Where is that going to be located? And I'm just assuming that there's going to be a facility barred inside the building as far as providing the rest area. That's it, the only question I have is septic.
Okay, Stu, could you speak to that, please?
Mr. Chairman, Stuart Clark with Green Seal Environmental. The septic system has been designed in the front parking lot on the, I guess would be on the east side over by Tyler Lane. It's a very small septic system due to the small amount of employees that will be there. I've spoken with the board of health, they will honor the existing test bits that were done there a few years back, and it's probably 10 feet off the property line, meeting Title 5 regulations.
Thank you.
Anything else, Al?
No, I have no further questions.
Jamie?
I just had a question in regard to the number of boats. You said six, six boats? Why six?
It's really, it's based on the length and the width of the typical boats that would be, I'd be bringing over here to service. So six boats allows for keeping certain amount of people busy during the winter. Four boats or three boats, yeah, what you end up having happen is you bring a boat inside in the winter for work, and at least half of the time, something comes up where it's, the boat has to sit for a period of time, where you're waiting for parts or waiting for the boat owner to approve something or various things. So six boats, the width of the building and the depth allows for six boats, and it's just the most efficient, really productivity-wise, to have six in. So if one or two of the six is held up, you have other boats to be worked on at that one time.
And you mentioned Allen Harbor, so is this a part of Allen Harbor?
Yes, right. So I would be a building part of the marine business on Lower County, and this building would be dedicated primarily for fall, winter, and spring indoor work.
I see, so any of the boats, then, that you're working on would be housed in the building all the time, right? So you wouldn't have any boats stored outside of the building as well, or?
No, no, no outside storage of either boats or equipment, really, and anything at all. Each boat would come in during the winter months, anywhere from three to five to six days. You'd work on that group, turn it over, take those six out, and bring six new ones in, just sort of repeat that cycle throughout the winter.
I see, I understand. And what is the total square footage of the building? Does anybody have that? I'm sorry, the hands are small.
It's 70 by 85.
Mr. Chairman, it's 4,680 square feet.
4,680, okay. Great, I didn't have any more questions at this time, thank you.
Okay, Brian?
Thank you. Regarding, you know, I know you're doing indoor detailing and so forth, but you still needed probably staging units. So you're saying that you're not going to be, where are you going to be putting your, you pull your units out, and you haven't had time to bring them back to, you know, Lower County Road, where are you staging them on the site?
Well, they get the bulk of these boats that we pulled out on a hydraulic trailer and taken away immediately. You wouldn't move them outside and then stage them. So that the, if you can picture this, so that there's two boats deep, three across, so the, ideally, the two boats that are in front of each one, you know, back to back, let's say, are done, you would take those out one at a time, bring them back to one of the storage lots, and then you bring the next two. And then the same thing happens, so that people, wouldn't be any reason or occasion where a boat would be set aside. They would just want to go in and come out, they wouldn't stay there for outside.
Okay. I noticed your gravel parking area, you're towards the rear of the lot. Is that for employee parking, or? And where's the access?
Gentlemen, if you're not called upon to speak, please put yourself on mute. Thank you. Go ahead, Brian.
But I think you're.
My question to the applicant is regarding gravel parking area. And what is the, is that going to be for employee parking, and where is the access to that gravel parking?
So that area in the, at the east end, east half of the dogleg, that's primarily for restaurant daytime employee parking, for the prep cook and that type of stuff. So the, they would drive down along the western edge of the building and park at the, at the beginning of the dogleg. The reason for that is so that they aren't parked in front of my doors to be in the way of moving the boats in and out during the day. And then my employee, she'd park in front of the doors.
Oh, so your staff's going to park in the front of the doors?
Most likely, that's the way I see it going, yeah. We would park, unless there's boats being moved in and out, we would be in front of the, front of the building, front of the garage doors.
Okay. So the gravel parking area is, I didn't catch that, that's part of the easement to Villaroma?
Essentially, the dogleg area of the lot has really been, hasn't been used, other than, it looked, at one time, there was a vegetable garden back there. So, right, it's not part of the easement area, but it's part of the easement agreement where they need parking for some daytime staff, and we worked it out with them where they, we would make that into a parking area for their daytime staff so that they wouldn't be in the way of moving the boats in and out when that comes up.
Okay. Looking to the back of the property, first of all, you, are you going to be putting lighting on the property? And how are you addressing that?
Yes, there will be, on the, there'll be two standard-sized entrance doors on the west side of the building. There'll be a single courtesy light, if you will, to light up the doorway. And then the only other lighting would be a, on the peak of the building facing 28, there will be a light there that would light up the parking area for at night.
So no lighting being shown on Tyler Lane or in the rear of the property?
No, no, I wouldn't have any, I, there wouldn't be any need for it, and it's done proposed.
Okay. The other question that have, regarding the perimeter, and it has to do also, I wrote the letter from the abutters regarding your plans for any landscaping or fencing, so you can basically, you know, hide or somewhat cover the, you know, the side of the building. Any plans of fencing or landscaping in the rear?
In the rear, there's a row of, I think they're Leland Cypress or something like that, and the, out of that whole row, for whatever reason, the western half have grown extremely tall, taller than the building. And then there's a big three to five on the eastern side of that row that haven't grown as tall. So we would plant something in front of those two, so that the building couldn't be viewed from the north side, from the condominiums, along the back edge of the lot.
Okay.
And we, the, there's existing plantings along Tyler Lane, they're not high at all, and those won't be disturbed. And I don't, there isn't anything planned at this point to, any plantings along the eastern side of the building. On the western side, we talked about a fence, one of the abutters had asked for a fence in one area, we're certainly open to that. The area, not just south of the dogleg, is kind of overgrown, there's a couple of old fences there now. So that area would have to be looked at, and we're willing to accommodate, you know, a request for a fence there. We had, that had come up in a, in a site meeting over the summer.
Okay, so you consider putting the rear, I mean, in the dogleg here, behind, in the rear of your building to block some of the side of the building to the condominiums? Is that what you're referring to?
No, the shrub, the tall shrubs across the back of the property.
Okay, I apologize, okay.
So, so that the tall ones obstruct the build, obstruct the proposed building already, and then the section of those tall ones, they get shorter as you head east, but we would be open to planting some taller ones in front of the, you know, not replace those, but add in some taller ones, so that height would carry across the whole northern half edge of the property, not the, at least as far as the building goes. And then, sure, we're open to a fence of some length, we didn't do any measuring that day, but, but to obscure, to help obscure the building from the western abutter.
All right, just real quick, so I don't have my compass on me, which, which sides are, is Tyler Lane the western side?
No, Tyler Lane would be the eastern side, Villaroma would be the west.
Okay, thank you, all right. And as a clarification, on your narrative, it indicates a rear setback of 23.9 feet, but I don't see that in the site plan.
Okay, Stu, could you answer that one?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, that, as we developed the project, the building got a little bit longer to accommodate the boats, because there wasn't enough area to move around between the boats, so it got a little bit longer, so that changed. But we're still, it's at 20.4 right now, but that's still outside the 20-foot setback.
Yeah, just want to clarify, I was trying to find the 23.9 in the site plan.
Yeah, we changed that a little bit.
Okay. All right, I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Chris?
Yeah, follow-up to the sighting of the building. It mentions in the, in the narrative that the front yard setback should be 25, it's only 12. What's that 12 measurement to? Is that to Tyler Lane?
Stu?
Chairman, that measurement is 12 feet to the property line. Tyler Lane, the actual pavement of Tyler Lane is another 10 feet away from there. So there's about 22 feet from the building to the edge of the pavement.
Right, so according to the code, you have to be 25 feet from both Tyler and Route 28?
That's correct.
Right. And the second thing is you talk about a parking variant. 20-yard front yard setback required from parking. Again, is that, the problem is that side along Tyler Lane being the issue?
Yeah, that's an existing parking area that they've been using for, excuse me, for Villaroma for years. All we're going to do is clean it up a little bit and reshape it. So it's kind of almost like an existing non-conforming, but we just thought it would be better to ask for the relief, and, at this point, just so we were all on the same page.
Okay.
And yes, it is from both Tyler and Route 28.
Thanks, I see Route 28, you wouldn't have much trouble getting 25 feet, but obviously Tyler, you'd lose the entire row of parking.
Right.
Okay. I have no further questions. I have no further questions.
Okay, I think the shape of this property is unique, and I think there is a legitimate hardship here because of the unique nature of the property, there isn't much can be done with it. I think any practical use is going to require a variance. And I think that further restriction is this parking easement. And in the back, we have the 100-foot floodplain. So I, I really think folks are going to meet the legal requirement for a variance. However, I do think if the board sees fit to grant the variance, we are going to need some conditions on it. I think we would want to require that during the period of construction, all the construction vehicles be parked on the site and not on Tyler Lane or Route 28. You've got plenty of room there, I don't think that should be an issue. I think we'd also require that any kind of repair work you're going to do be done inside the building. In that zone, repair work is allowed by right if you didn't need a special permit, but it has to be done inside a building. So I think we'd want that as a condition. And a further condition that there will be no outside boat storage. We're not going to do that, you told us, so that should not be an issue. How much noise is going to be involved in your repair work inside the building? I'm not sure what kind of repair work you intend to do, that's the basis of the question.
Sure, as far as machinery goes, it would be things like a, an electric handheld buffer, polisher, an electric drill, cordless drill. Really, the bulk of the other work is done by hand. Painting with a roller or a brush. Waxing by hand. Buffing the wax off by hand with a rag. So not, not a lot of what we do is create, will create a lot of noise. And I, I don't expect that the noise would be audible outside of the building with the doors closed at all.
Okay, and I think probably we'd want to condition that on the back of the building there along your, I guess it will be the northerly line, that you do put some more Cypress in to maintain the height. You said you'd be willing to do that. Shielding the, the building from the condominiums in the back. As far as the fence, I think we'll, we'll hear what Ms. Reed has to say about a fence to screen the building and her property. Well, that's, okay, that is pretty much what I have at this point. So I'm going to ask now if there's anybody out in the public that would like to comment on this application. Ms. Reed, I see you're there. If you want to ask your question to the applicant, yeah, please unmute yourself. Make your name and your address, and then you can address the applicant.
My name is Linda Reed. My address is 212 Renfrew Avenue in Trenton, New Jersey. I am the owner of the abutting property, which is 276 Route 28. This project will abut my property on two sides. The dog leg that's been referred to is the rear property line of my home. It should also be noted that that whole dog leg portion is a drainage easement that was required for the construction of the semi-detached condominium homes that are to the rear, that would be the north. I also have a common line with them from the back of the Villa Roma property to the dog leg portion, which would be the west side of the project and the east side of my backyard. The house that I own is a small Cape Cod. It's on a flag lot, so the only frontage I have on 28 is my driveway. The home sits very much towards the back of the lot, so it's very close to the drainage easement area. And the side of the backyard where I have a storage shed is the common line with this project. I do have some concerns about how this is going to affect the quality of life and the enjoyment of my use of my home. I've owned this home for 50 years. When I bought it, it was all vacant land in the back. About 20 years ago, the condominium homes were constructed. And there's a, a separation from my yard to the condominiums with that dog leg portion, where one of the neighbors has had a garden several years. My concern is not so much the building and the use of the land as it is going to be the appearance in terms of fences, landscaping, and the visibility of the building as my home is oriented towards the rear, not towards 28. So the Villa Roma Restaurant is in the front of my house, but it really doesn't impact us very much because the living room, family room, screen porch, and patio are all across the back. So my concerns are the fencing and how that will be done, the landscaping and that it will be kept tidy, and that I am not going to be influenced by the lights that will be over the doors on the west side of the building. And will they be on during the night, overnight, causing the backyard to be quite bright? Will the fences be able to keep the visibility of the cars that are parked and the vehicles that may be used for the business from being seen or heard from the porch area? That pretty much covers it. I was not sure in Harwich whether all of the approvals get done tonight or if there's a second meeting that will address things like the fencing, the paving, the landscaping in terms of your planning board. I, I wasn't sure if this was just a zoning variance for use or whether it was a full planning in terms of how high the fences would be. The fence on the property line that is between the building and my side yard, the site plan says a six-foot fence. The building is going to be 25 feet tall, and there's going to be lighting on that side of the building and a driveway running between my yard and the building. So I'm a little concerned about noise. I would like to suggest that perhaps that fence could be taller on that side portion so that it muffled both the visibility and the noise a little bit better. We did have a site meeting with the applicant this summer. At that time, if my memory serves me correctly, I thought we were talking about a building that was 20 by 40 by 14. It's now 40 by 60 by 25, that's a significant increase over what we talked about. And if it can be done not to impact the enjoyment of my home, I, I don't object to it. But I would like to be a little more assured that lighting and noise and the appearance of the building is not going to impact a home I've enjoyed in Harwich for a very long time.
Okay, why don't you, you had a whole lot, why don't you address your concerns one at a time, and then the applicant can respond. Why don't you start with the last point, the stockade fence, and ask the applicant, you know, whatever you want to ask him as far as the height goes, the length along that side?
There is existing fencing, let me just further explain there. There is existing fencing where the fencing is identified on the site plan. Just in the last windstorm, last winter, the fence on the east side of the project, the west sideline of my lot, was a five-foot-tall stockade fence, which is now gone because it fell over in the wind. The rear line, which it reaches the dog leg portion, has a short four-foot fence now, three and a half, four-foot fence. If there's to be that gravel parking area, I'm not sure that that's tall enough to, to block both the gravel and the vehicles. So I would like to see that at six feet, which is what's on the site plan. My concern on the east-west boundary, which goes from the corner of the Villa Roma down to the dog leg portion, is that if the building is going to be approved at 25 feet tall and the stockade fence is going to be six, I'm concerned that it's not going to muffle the traffic on the driveway between the building and my yard. And that the visibility from six feet to 25 feet is quite a difference, and I'm concerned about the appearance of that. I was hoping it might be able to be a taller fence. Other than that, the fencing and where it is located on the site plan, I have no objection to. The fence coming along the dog leg where it shows the rain garden on the site plan, that fence comes along the north boundary of my yard and the south boundary of the dog leg, and I have no objection to how far it comes across that back property line. So I, I would be pleased.
Why don't I stop you, and let's give the applicant a chance to address the height of the fence on the easterly side of your property, the westerly side of the applicant's. The north side, you said six foot is okay. But you'd like to see it higher between you and the building. So let's see what the applicant has to say.
Yeah, we, sure, that, this, this had come up when we had the, the site visit, and we're open, I, I don't know that I've ever seen a stockade fence taller than six feet, but we're open to, you know, whatever fencing is reasonable along that, in between the, the Ms. Reed's property and the, the western side of the building. I guess I'm, I'm trying to visualize a stockade fence taller than six feet, how that would look or be done. But we're, we're open to putting something along that, the edge of that, edge of her property.
Mr. Chairman, Stuart Clark. They, they do make an eight-foot stockade fence. The only thing I would ask the zoning board is, in some towns I've encountered, you would have to get another variance for a fence over six feet tall. Is that the case in Harwich?
Well, we'll just cover it, we could extend the variance to that right now if we're going to do that. You wouldn't have to come back again, we're not going to make you do that.
Mr. Chairman, may I add one thing?
Okay, wait, yes, go ahead, okay, Ms. Reed.
I would just like to make sure that the finished side, if it's going to be a stockade fence and not a fence that's finished on both sides, that the finished side be facing my yard and not their building?
Yeah, I don't think that's a problem for them. Okay, would eight foot do it for you, Ms. Reed?
I think so, I think I can landscape in front of it within my yard, and that would be, that would take care of it.
Okay, and what about the length? So from the, the corner there, I guess it would be the northeast corner of the app, of your property, northwest corner, down along the length of the building, and would it end where the building ends? Is that what we're talking about, or extend six feet past the building? My map is so small, I can't really read the distances here.
It would run from the northeast corner of the Villa Roma lot
Right.
to the northeast corner of my lot, which is where the dog leg begins to come across the back of my property.
Yes, I understand that, but how far do you envision it going towards Route 28? That front corner?
Well, it would have joined the Villa property, and I don't know how far back the Villa property comes from 28. At the very back of his lot is where his dumpster is located. I'm not sure if that shows on the site plan.
Okay, maybe I'm not making myself clear. If from the corner that we just talked about, it would extend down in a southerly direction going towards Route 28, paralleling, roughly paralleling the building that's proposed. But where would you see it ending there?
At the corner where my lot meets the Villa Roma's back lot.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Stuart Clark?
Yeah, I need to hear now from the applicant because I don't know how that affects the ingress to the parking easement there. Go ahead, Mr. Clark.
Mr. Chairman, we accounted for that. That property line is 39.06 feet long, but we proposed to, to take that fence all the way up to the edge of the building, the front base of the building. So that was going to be probably another, looks like maybe another 12 feet. So a total length, I would say of, say 39 and 12 would be 52 feet.
So it'll be eight-foot high by 52 feet long. Finished side facing west. Okay? And we would want to make that a condition also.
And Mr. Chairman, one other thing. These panels typically come in six-foot sections or eight-foot sections. So if we round it off, number so, I would just like the opportunity to make it longer if we need to.
Okay, I don't think that would be an objection, right, Ms. Reed?
It's no objection to me at all.
Okay. Did you have any other concerns, Ms. Reed?
The only other concern was if those lights are going to be shining from the west side into my backyard, will they be on 24 hours a day? Or will they be turned off when they leave the building at the end of the workday?
I'll ask the applicant to respond to that, please.
So the, the lighting along the western side would be about, the height of a typical doorway, call it six and a half feet for sake of argument, the light would be at about six feet high. So it would be below the
The fence.
Height of the fence. And they, and they wouldn't, there wouldn't be, there wouldn't be a, a reason for them to be on 24 hours. It's, it's, it's really just a light to light that doorway for, now this, this time of year, especially when you're going in and out, it's, it's getting dark at close to four o'clock. They wouldn't be on at night.
I would have no objection as long as they were off by nine or 10 o'clock in the evening.
I, I guess from my perspective, I would prefer not to put a time limit on it in case they need, feel they need lighting for security reasons. I would prefer to put a condition in that any exterior lighting be no higher than six feet. Or seven feet possibly, that way it's going to be below the stockade fence. But if they feel they need lighting for security purposes, they could do it to prevent vandalism.
Mr. Chairman, they'll need more than six feet, I, I believe, to be over the egress of the door. I mean, be more like eight feet high, or at least seven anyways.
Okay, well, I was going to actually, I just looked at what I had written, no higher than stockade fence. So that would be below eight feet. And they could always, you could always put a security light that would only go on if somebody was there in the beam to trip, trip the light. If you had security lighting, it would be on continuously. Although the raccoons love to set mine off. Anyway, is there, do you have anything further, Ms. Reed?
I think that pretty much covers it, I thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the public that would also like to comment on this application? No, hearing no one, Mr. Donahue, why don't you read the second letter that we have? I don't have a copy of it.
Yes, the author of the letter, the last name is Tyler, and it was extremely short, and he indicated he was in favor of the project.
Okay, actually, I do have that one, yes, thank you. I did get that late. Okay. Mr. LeBlanc, do you have any further comments, or Mr. Clark?
No, we, we certainly, we want to be a, a good neighbor to the abutters. We met with We met with them, as was stated, over the summer. And we're willing to be flexible and hear concerns about lighting, fencing. We've been on lower county for well over 90 years now. Certainly, I haven't been there. But we're in a residential area and have good relationships with all of our neighbors. So I'm used to accommodating that. We're in the customer service business. So I don't foresee any issues coming up. And if they do, I understand the importance of getting along and we'll make it work.
Okay, well, thank you. We appreciate your willingness to be flexible on this. Any further questions from the board?
Yeah, I just have one, Mr. Chairman. Now that you're covering up with the gravel area, you know, 5,000-foot building or 4,600, how are you handling the roof drainage coming off particularly towards Mrs. Reed's property?
Stu?
Mr. Chairman, the roof drainage is going to be collected in a gutter system and directed to the existing infiltration system at the rear of the lot.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So make the motion, close the public hearing.
Second, Mr. Donahue. Well, Mr. Murphy, second. Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Hearing is closed. Any discussion on this case by the board? I think it makes, meets the requirements for a variance. And if it's okay, I'll make a motion in the case, unless there's discussion or we can discuss the motion, only because I've got so many notes everywhere here. I think it's easier if I just do it. Okay, I will move that in case 2020-41, Craig LeBlanc of Cool Change LLC, be granted a variance from the requirements of Section 325-16 and 325-42L to create a lot for bolt maintenance and repair with a structure to house these activities. And also be granted a variance to construct an eight-foot-high stockade fencing. The application pursuant to the requirements of MGL Chapter 40A, Section 10. I'm sorry, the application is pursuant to the requirements of MGL Chapter 40A, Section 10. The property is located at 282 Route 28, MAC 12, parcel G2-1 in the CH1 zoning district. Board grants this variance, having found that the applicant meets the requirements of the bylaw and of MGL Section 10, Chapter 40A. As the shape of the land justifies the grant of the variance and it's also facilitated by a parking easement. If the board is not going to grant this variance, there would be a substantial hardship to the applicant. Any use of the property, any reasonable use, would require a variance. The board further finds that the condition of the property is specific to this particular property, does not generally affect the entire district, and that there will be no substantial detriment to the public good by the granting of this variance and that its granting will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. All work shall be performed in accordance with the plan submitted with this application. Variance is granted subject to the following conditions. One, during the construction, all construction vehicles must be parked on the site and none may be parked on Route 28 or on Tyler Lane. Two, all repair work must be done only within the enclosed building. Three, there should be no outside boat storage. Four, the applicant will add in Leland Cypress as required on the north property line so as to maintain the height level across the entire north line, shielding the proposed building from the condominiums to the north. What was that? Was that four? Five, okay. The applicant will construct a six-foot stockade fence and maintain it in reasonable repair along its, how to describe it here? Along the area where there is presently a stockade fence on the so-called dog leg of the property. And it will install and maintain a reasonable repair an eight-foot stockade fence from the northwest corner of its property, which is, I guess, the northeast corner of the property of Linda Reed. And run that fence 52 feet or longer in a southerly direction towards Route 28 with the finished side of that fence facing westerly towards the property of Ms. Reed. A further condition, I've lost the numbers, is that no light on the building shall be higher than the stockade fencing.
Okay, I'm back. Mr. Chair?
Okay, wait a minute. I've got one more condition. The last condition is that is a condition of this approval that a violation of the terms and conditions of this variance may be enforced as a violation of the Harwood zoning bylaw pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 7 in the Harwood zoning bylaw, as these may be amended from time to time. That is my, the motion. A member of the board have a comment?
I think the applicant had something he wanted to say.
It's too late, the applicant.
I think the question was, I believe, just on the conditions you put forward, there would be a light facing the parking lot at the top of the roof. And that's going to be above eight feet, I believe. The height we were talking about was the one at the doorway facing Ms. Reed's property.
Okay, well.
That was the only discussion we had, was that one, the light over the doorway.
Okay, I'll put another condition in then, that any light on the corner of the building that's going to be over eight feet be turned off at 9:00 PM and remain off until 7:00 AM. Does that work? No.
No, no. It's the main reason for the purpose of the light facing 28 is to light the parking area for the Villa Roma customers. So nine o'clock would be too early for, the light won't shine towards Ms. Reed's property at all. That'll shine towards 28.
Okay, well, we'll put the pariso that'll shine towards 28 and be shielded so as not to shine towards Ms. Reed's property. And that when Villa Roma is not operating, it will be turned off.
Sure.
I have a second on my motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Mr. Donahue, discussion of the motion by the board? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous? Your variance is granted, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Sheila, I don't know if you got all of the many conditions, but I can send them to you tomorrow if you want.
I would so appreciate that.
Okay, and I will, and I authorize Sheila to stamp in all the documents submitted with that application and with all the applications that are approved tonight. Okay, thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome. We can move on to our next case.
Case number 2020-42. Alfred P. Quick, Jr. and Sheila Quick, through their agent, attorney William Crowell, have applied for special permit or in the alternative, a variance to renovate existing garage to create habitable space within the west side setback. The application is pursuant to the Code of Town of Howard's Table 2. Area regulation is set forth as MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6. Property is located at 11 Prince Charles Drive, MAP 110, parcel S26, in RL Zone District.
Attorney Crowell, I don't know if you heard before we started, but in the agenda, the description of case 2020-42 and 2020-43 are sort of, are repeated. I don't know if that causes a problem or not. The property locations are identified and the documents in our Excela database are correct for each case. So I don't know if you have any concern with that or not.
I didn't follow what you just said, Mr. Chairman. The agenda I have just has one paragraph for 42 and one for 43.
Right, but they're, both talk about the same request of relief to renovate an existing garage. And I don't believe that's correct.
I see. Okay, I see what you're saying.
I didn't pick it up. One of the other guys, two of the other guys did.
Right. I don't particularly have any concern about it. The, it's accurate for 42, for the Quirk, not Quick, but Quirk case. It's not, it's not specifically what we're doing on number 43 at 24 Central Ave. But we are, in general terms, we're seeking a special permit or in the alternative of variance to renovate the existing structure.
Yeah, and as I said, I mean, it's your call.
I think it's within the scope, Mr. Chairman.
I think it's okay.
Yeah, and I would agree. We're
Wanted to give you a chance, if you have a concern. I think that, as I said, the properties, the addresses are correct and the underlying documents in Excela are correct. So I think it's proper notice, but it's not my call. It's yours as the attorney of record.
If it became a problem during the hearing on 24, we could always continue and re-advertise or withdraw without prejudice or something along those lines. But I think it's within the scope of we're asking for a special permit to renovate a single-family dwelling.
Okay, I'm happy if you're happy.
Okay. So on 42, on the Quirk case, for the record, I'm attorney William Crowell from Howard's Foot, representing Mr. and Mrs. Quirk. The builder, Rick Roy, is online with us this evening also and listening in. The property is on Prince Charles Drive off of Route 24 or Pleasant Lake Avenue, as it's known, almost to Bruce, the Brewster Line. It's right where Long Pond and Seymour's Pond kind of squeezed together. And it's on, it's on the right-hand side as you start to go up that hill of Prince Charles Drive. The petitioners are not seeking to change the footprint of the existing garage. They're changing the interior layout of the garage and adding habitable space in the garage as shown on the plot, the certified plot plan submitted with the petition. They are asking also for an addition on the other side, on the east side, on the certified plot plan where it's in gray dots and it says proposed addition. But that addition is more than 20 feet from the lot line. I don't think the board needs to grant any relief for that addition. So what we're really talking about is the other side of the existing house, which is 13 feet from the westerly lot line. So it's pre-existing, non-conforming as to the structure. Again, not changing the footprint, but changing the interior layout of the garage and the first and second floors. And what they would be doing is adding habitable space, creating habitable space on the first floor and having a dormer added off the back on the front, I'm sorry, and a new roof line on the rear of the garage as shown on the building plans by Rick Roy Construction. So what we're dealing with, I think, is a classic Gale case situation where we have an existing non-conforming structure, adding habitable space. So we're intensifying the use of that property. And in doing so, under the Gale case, we would argue that there would be no consequential substantial increase in noise, traffic, fumes, odors, congestion of the like, and no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood if the board saw a fit to grant this special permit this evening. Thank you.
I only have one question. Is the height of the garage going to be raised? Are they going to take the top of it off and then build up the garage?
I do not think the plans call for that, no.
Okay, I couldn't quite pick that out of the plans. Thank you.
If they were, it will still be under the 30-foot limit.
Yes, no, I see that. It's under the roof line. Al?
I don't have any questions with regard to this property.
Okay, Jamie?
No questions, thank you.
Chris?
I have no questions.
Brian?
Actually, I have any questions either. I think it's all set, I go.
Okay, on this one, I don't really see a need for our construction condition. It's Prince Charles. It's kind of a quiet street. I am familiar with it. And they've got a pretty decent-sized driveway there so they can probably get any vehicles off of Prince. But it's a circle. It's kind of a dead end, so there's not a lot of true traffic. Okay, anybody?
I'm sure Mr. Roy would welcome that reprieve. Thank you.
Well, you know, we don't grant it often, but I
That's why I'm highlighting it.
I think that location's okay. Anybody out in the audience that would like to comment on this application? Hearing, no one? I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Mr. Sullivan, did I have a second?
Yes.
Okay, who made the motion?
I did. Al.
Al made the motion. Brian seconded. Okay. All in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye. Hearing is now closed. Somebody want to make a motion in the case? Okay, I guess I'm going to have to make the motion. Okay, I will move that in case 2020-42, Alfred P. Quirk, Jr. and Sheila Quirk be granted a special permit, special permit to renovate an existing garage to create habitable space within the west side setback. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Table 2, Area Regulations, as set forth in MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6. The property is located The property is located at 11 Prince Charles Drive, map 110 parcel X26 in the RL zoning district. The board hereby grants this special permit, having found that the applicant meets the requirements of the bylaw and the Gale case. As the proposed project will intensify one or more existing non-conformities, will not create any new non-conformity, and will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. All work shall be performed in accordance with the plan submitted with the application, and the board puts no conditions on this special permit. Could I have a second on that motion, please?
Second.
Mr. Murphy. Discussion by the board? No, hearing none. I'll call for a vote. All in favor are granting the special permit? Aye. All right, permit granted unanimously, Attorney Crowell.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Board.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Al, you can call our next case.
Okay, case number 2020-43. I may mispronounce his first name. Manaya Lawrence, through his agent, William Crowell, has applied for special permit or in the alternative of variance to renovate existing garage and create habitable space within the West Side setback. The application is pursuant to the Code of Town of Howard's Table 2, Area Regulation Table 3, Height and Bulk Regulation as set forth in MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6. The property is located at 24 Central Ave., map 6B parcel L91 in RH2 zoning district.
Okay, Attorney Crowell, if you could please identify yourself again for the record and then present the particular.
Attorney William Crowell and representing this evening, Manajay Lawrence, who is on with us now. She's the owner of the property at 20, 24 Central Avenue. And this is down in the campgrounds. You're all familiar with the campgrounds in Howard's Port. And what she's seeking to do is not renovate a garage or create habitable space. She's seeking to square off the rear of the dwelling and as per my paragraph that is part of your petition, it says she wants to, she's seeking to partially demolish and renovate the existing single-family dwelling as per the certified plot plan by East Southeast LLC and the building elevation plans that we filed. She's squaring off the footprint. You know things are very tight down in the campground and space is at a premium. So on the west side, you see that the existing dwelling is 2.4 feet from the westerly lot line. Sometimes down in the campground, as you know, it goes over the lot line or into the street. This is yet at least 2.4 feet. With the angle of the existing dwelling and the westerly lot line, the squaring off would mean that we would come 1/10th of an inch closer to the lot line. Not 1 foot, but .1 feet, which is like 1.2 inches. So I would argue that that's negligible. But under the Gale case, we're allowed to, you're allowed to issue a special permit that allows for the intensification of an existing non-conformity. So we're less than 20 feet from the lot line. If in your discretion, you see fit to allow us to be 2.3 feet from the lot line, then you're allowed to do that as long as you don't think that it's a substantial detriment to the neighborhood, et cetera. We also, in squaring off the rear of the dwelling, would be creating habitable space within the 20-foot setback. And that habitable, habitable space would be .1 feet, foot closer to the westerly lot line. There will be new steps, as shown on the plan. Shows a proposed, two proposed steps on the southerly side and on the easterly side going out towards Central Avenue. Steps there, which use up some site coverage. Existing building coverage, as I said, it's tight down there, is 40.38%, 30% maximum. So again, the Gale case applies. It's already pre-existing, non-conforming as to site coverage. That will increase slightly to 43.43% because of the squaring off of the building. The existing site coverage is 49, 45.39%, 35% maximum, and it would increase to 53.27%. The building inspector issued his denial letter indicating that we're exceeding the site coverage and, and we don't meet the minimum setback on the west side and referred the case to you for relief if you see fit. I know that the Board of Health submitted correspondence. And we, so we've already been to the Board of Health. The survey, the engineer has already been to the Board of Health in July and they granted approval for this project. So they issued an order of conditions saying that beyond this project, if we did something more than this project, we'd have to go back to them if we sought to expand square footage, habitable space, or number of bedrooms. And they put a three-bedroom limit on it. So I don't want you to read that comment by the Board of Health that's saying, no, they're against this project. They've already approved this project, but we went to them first.
Okay.
So in summary, again, we have a Gale case situation where we're seeking to intensify existing non-conformities. We want to come 1/10th of a foot closer on the west side with the structure and the habitable space and increase the building coverage somewhat and the site coverage somewhat as a result, as you can see on the plot plan, and would submit that, that those renovations would not constitute a substantial increase in noise, traffic, fumes, odors, congestion of the like. It would not constitute a result in a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood. Thank you.
On the proposed step on the easterly side, is that just going to be one slab out to the street?
That's the way I read the plan, yes. It's not a, it's not a any kind of an overhang or a porch or anything else. It's just to get to the brick walk that already exists to get from the front doors of the house, front door of the house to the brick walkway out to Central Avenue.
Okay. But that, the brick walkway is outside the property line, right? That's the town's, somebody else's. Okay. Jamie?
I don't have any questions.
Chris?
I don't have any questions.
Al?
As Mr. Crowell has described it, being in the campground, it is extremely tight. I just have one request as a property owner. If you have any extra money, could you put a house number on that, please?
I will, for sure.
I have no further questions.
Excellent point. Brian?
We're right between the house number and the first looking for a house to renovate and garage. I went up and down the street about nine times. But, no, I don't think that you could have a smaller intensification of the Gale Act on this. So I don't have any questions. I think it's going to be a nice renovation that's going to improve the look of the property and the sightlines. I think it's a well-done, I think it's a well-done design.
Thank you.
Okay, on this one, of course, Attorney Crowell, we are going to want the demolition restriction. Time restriction, given the campground. I mean, down there yesterday, not yesterday, when did I go? Monday, it was tough sledding, not so much right where this property is, but over on Quasong, there were some landscapers and wow, without any traffic at all, just me and the landscaper, it's tough to get by. Okay, is there anybody in the public who would like to comment on this application? Hearing no one, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So moved by Mr. Murphy. A second, please?
I'll second it.
Second from Mr. Donahue. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Does anybody want to make a motion in the case?
I'll make the motion.
Go ahead, Al.
All right, and case number 20, 2020-43. Manaya Lawrence, through her agent, attorney William Crowell, has applied for special permit. The app, for the West Side set, yes, a special permit for the, you can eliminate the habitable space. The application is pursuant to the Code of Town of Howard's Table 2, Area Regulation Table 3, Height and Bulk Regulation is set forth in MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6, and property is located at 24 Central Ave., map 6B. Parcel is L91 in the RH2 zoning district. The board hereby grants special permit, having found that the applicant meets the requirements of the bylaw in the Gale case. It should not be, let's see. The property, as the proposed project, will intensify one or more of the existing non-conformities. No, it will not create a new non-conformity, will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. All work to be performed in accordance with the plan submitted with the application. The property is in a congested area, so there will be no demolition, exterior construction, or new landscaping during the period of June 30 to Labor Day in any year. During the life of the project, all construction vehicles shall be parked on the property. That's, I gotta leave that out because there's no chance that's going to happen.
Work down, or the, the demolition is fine, but then you need to add the, the general one there, number three.
Yeah, number three would be, it is a condition of this approval of the violation of the terms, the conditions, this special permit, and may be enforced as violation of the Howard zoning bylaws pursuant to, that's in the law, Chapter 40A, Section 7, and the Howard zoning bylaw as these may be amended from time to time.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion by the board?
No.
Okay, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All in favor are granting the special permit? Aye. Special permit granted unanimously, Ms. Lawrence. Nice, going to be a nice project for you, I think, for the neighborhood.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Okay, you're, good evening.
Thank you, folks.
You can call our last.
Mr. Hilliard still on the board? Is Mr. Hilliard on the board?
Mr. Hilliard has resigned as of yesterday. He's got some work and family commitments and just he can't devote the time anymore. So I, you know, thank him for his loyal service. The Board of Selectmen will thank him at the next meeting, but unfortunately, he's had to leave us.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Attorney Crowell, we'll see you next month, I guess. Have a good Christmas.
Thank you also.
All right, Al, you can call the last case, please.
Case number 2020-44, Andrew and Karen Plotner, through their agent, Brian Wall of Cape Coastal Builders, have applied for special permit or in the alternative, a variance to demolish and replace pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Town of Howard's 325-54, Table 2, Area Regulation as set forth in MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6. The property is located at 11 Hiawatha, map, Hiawatha Road, I'll complete that, map 6 parcel G5-2 in RH1 zoning district.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wall, you could present your petition, please.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman and the members of the board. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
For the record, my name is Brian Wall. I'm an attorney. And tonight I'm representing the applicant in this matter, which is Cape Coastal Builders Incorporated, a local building company, and I also represent the property owners, Andrew and Karen Plotner. With me tonight on the panel, they haven't shown their webcams, but are two proprietors of Cape Coastal, Peter Hopple and Peter Barnard, and also with me tonight is Dan Froto from Moran Engineering. As read in the notice, the applicant is seeking a special permit tonight to authorize the demolition of an existing, non-conforming, three-bedroom dwelling and to replace it with a new, non-conforming, three-bedroom dwelling. The application is under Section 354-54-5 of the Howard zoning bylaw, which specifically confers upon the Board of Appeals authority to grant this type of project if it meets the five criteria that are set forth in the bylaw. We have submitted a written narrative, which I'm going to kind of summarize in my presentation, an existing conditions plan, a proposed conditions plan, architecturals, and floor plans. First, I'd like to just briefly describe the existing conditions. So the property is a small lot, 5,600 square feet, with only 60 feet of frontage. It's currently improved with a three-bedroom, single-family ranch-style dwelling, which has an attached single-car garage, which was all initially constructed in 1950. The lot is shown on a subdivision plan dated October 1962. The status of the property is non-conforming in many respects, and I'd like to briefly discuss that. So as far as area is concerned, required is 40,000. It has 5,600. Frontage is supposed to be 25. We're conforming there with 60. Front yard setback is supposed to be 20 feet. We have 11.9. The side yard setback is supposed to be 20 feet. We have 12.5 feet on one side and 14.9 on another. The rear is supposed to be 20, and we have 15.1. Building coverage is 30% maximum, and we're at 25.6. And site coverage is 35% maximum, and we're at 42, so we're conforming to that one. The proposed project is to demolish this existing, single-story, three-bedroom dwelling and to replace it with a new, two-story, three-bedroom dwelling with an incorporated garage, a deck, a retaining wall, and a new septic system and associated landscaping. The new dwelling will maintain the existing front and rear yard setbacks as well as the site coverage, and it will actually improve the setback on the southerly side, and it will reduce building coverage. So if approved, the new dwelling will be the following. As far as front yard setback, the same. The side yard setback on the southerly side is 12.5. That will be improved to a conforming 20 feet. And the side on the, I might have said that wrong, the north side is becoming conforming. The side on the south side is remaining the same at 14.9. The rear is 15.1. That's remaining the same. Building coverage is being reduced slightly, and site coverage is remaining the same. So overall, we respectfully submit it's an improved condition. The bylaw at 325-54-5 again authorizes demolition and replacement of pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwellings by special permit if five criteria are met. And I'm going to go through each one of them briefly and argue why we meet them. The first criteria says, the replacement of the structure will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. And I heard all the hearings earlier tonight about the Gale case. This is essentially the same. The house is appropriately sized for the lot. It's also consistent with what's happening in the neighborhood. Many of the other property owners are in in the neighborhood, many of the other property owners are improving their properties, there's a project across the street at eleven, I'm sorry, twelve Hiawatha, that's being handled by Cape Coastal Builders, and it's under construction right now. There's going to be no increase in bedrooms, the existing nonconforming encroachment on the southerly side will be eliminated, and it will become conforming to current zoning. Building coverage will be reduced by eighty-five square feet, the number of bedrooms remains the same, there's going to be a new septic system, all habitable space will be raised above the FEMA floodplain, which is not the case for the current property. The second story meets height requirements, thirty feet is allowed, and it will be twenty-seven feet, eight and a half inches. So thus, our contention is that the replacement structure will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. The next criteria is, the replacement of the structure will not cause or contribute to any undue nuisance, hazard, or construction in the neighborhood zoning district or the town. The replacement structure will conceivably be bigger, essentially because of the second story, but it's going to have the same number of bedrooms, and therefore, the utilization of the structure and the property will essentially be the same. There's not going to be any increase in traffic, or fumes, or noise, or anything of that nature. So therefore, our contention is the new structure will not cause or contribute to any undue nuisance, hazard, or congestion of the neighborhood. Third, the replacement structure will not increase any of the following nonconformances, building coverage, site coverage, or setback, and there are no such increases, there's no increase in building coverage, site coverage, or setback, and as I've said already, there's a decrease in building coverage from twenty-five point six to twenty-five, I'm sorry, twenty-four point two, that's a decrease from one thousand four hundred and twenty-nine square feet down to one thousand three hundred and fifty-three square feet. The existing setback encroachments are maintained at the front and the rear, and will be improved on the southerly side to a conforming setback, twelve point five feet to twenty. The fourth criteria is the replacement structure will reduce at least one of the following existing nonconformances, building coverage, site coverage, or setback encroachment. Again, we're kind of repeating myself here, I don't mean to, but I'm trying to methodically go through the criteria. The replacement structure will reduce building coverage, twenty-five point six to twenty-four point two, will eliminate the nonconformity on the southerly side yard by increasing setback from twelve point five to twenty point one, bringing that into conformance. The last criteria is the replacement structure will not increase the habitable square footage of the structure by more than twenty-five percent over habitable square footage of the existing structure. And I consulted with our team, and I read the zoning bylaw, and it's our consensus that there's no square footage limitations in this particular RH one district, so we would submit that this is not applicable. And I also looked at the special permit that the Board of Appeals granted just back in January of this year for that project on twelve Hiawatha that I mentioned, and this particular criteria was not addressed by the board when the board allowed that tear-down and rebuild. So in conclusion, we think this is a very good project because it maintains existing setbacks and makes actually one of them better. It's essentially the same use, a three-bedroom dwelling for a three-bedroom dwelling, new septic, FEMA compliant, no more intense use. We think it's a very good project, we hope that you did look at the architecturals and the site plan, and we would ask that you to approve the special permit tonight.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Wall. Yeah, I think it's in compliance with the bylaw and with the Gale case, I do think we need the construction time restriction down there, Hawaii, Hiawatha, that's pretty tight street, tight neighborhood. The only question I have, it's at least, it appears to me on the plot plan that the driveway and part of the parking area actually goes over the lot line, unless I'm misreading the plan there, which is possible.
No, I read the plan the same way, I think that's a pre-existing condition, that's the way it is now, and it's not being proposed to be changed.
Okay, I mean, I don't care, that's between, I mean, it doesn't, for our purposes, I don't care, for zoning purposes, that's between.
It looks like it's shared driveway when I drove by the property and walked down there. The property to the south, I think utilizes the same driveway.
Okay, maybe they have some kind of a joint easement or something.
Yeah, that's what it looks like.
Okay, I've got no further questions. Chris, did you have anything?
No, I have no questions.
Brian, you gotta unmute.
Yep, thank you. Although it's not applicable props to the granting of the permit, but regarding the Board of Health issues with the bonus room, will the construction, you think, be changed at all to comply with the Board of Health's requirements?
Mr. Chairman, Dan Froto from Moran Engineering, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we got you, Dan, thank you.
Okay, thanks. We have altered that bonus room, probably from what you've seen, we go to the Board of Health next week, and we had preliminary meeting with the health agents, and we had to open up that bonus room into the office area, so that we met the six-foot, six-foot opening that the health department has, so that it's not considered a bedroom. So I believe because this board was applied for weeks before the Board of Health, that you don't have that newer plan of the bonus room walls, so they have, the agents have looked at it, the Board of Health will look at it next week, and will certainly have to meet their requirements for it to be considered a three-bedroom.
Okay. All right, thank you, just wanted to check, there be no changes to the actual outside walls in the site plan or anything. I have no other further questions.
Hey, Al?
I think, Al.
Yes, may I just read in the letter from the health department, just so it's on our record?
Sure.
It says, I have reviewed the application for a special permit to demolish, replace a single-family dwelling located eleven Hiawatha. The property currently has Board of Health variance approvals for the septic system and is limited to three-bedroom maximum. This application will be reviewed by the Board of Health for reconsideration on December fifteen, twenty twenty. It is important to note that the bonus room counts as a bedroom and will not be approved. I understand Mr. Froto had obviously referred to that, but I just want to get this in for our records.
Okay, thank you. They would have to go before the Board of Health anyway, but, and they are, I mean, the Board of Health has to sign off on it, but it's a good point. Jamie?
Just a quick question, I understand that it's in the floodplain, what is the requirement for raising, how high up will it have to be raised?
The state building code would put any, any non-flood compliant materials, one foot above flood level. I believe the flood level is twelve there, so that's why we have our top of foundation set at thirteen point one. Anything below this elevation thirteen can only be used for vehicle parking, storage, or access to the building. And then that, the lowest floor, that basement or garage, that drive-in garage and storage area floor has to be aggregate on one side of the building, which would be the, which would be the east side, the garage side, and those would be the FEMA requirements and building code requirements.
So I understand that those don't count for the high requirements under the bylaws, but you're looking at the actual height of around forty feet then? Is that right?
I believe the height would start, building height would start at the elevation twelve, and so you could go up to forty-two feet in the floodplain, in this floodplain, and I believe we're, we're below that forty, we're below that thirty feet above the flood level. I think that the town has been changing the building height, and all the towns have, with the idea of trying to help people as they meet the floodplain requirements, because the building departments want the people, want people to update their houses as readily as they can, because when we do, it's been a long time since we've had a major hurricane, but when we do, it, there's been a lot of buildings since the fifties when we had the last major hurricane. So the towns have been trying to help that, and one of the methods has been the, changing the building height to start at floodplain, so that you can take even existing houses and lift them up by the zoning code.
No, I understand, and I agree with that, I just think that a lot of the public is not aware of how that affects height, but thank you.
Anything further? Anybody in the public want to comment on this application? Hearing no one, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
All right, case number twenty twenty dash forty-four.
Al, Al, wait a minute, we gotta close the public hearing first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Our motion to close the public hearing.
All right, Brian moved to close the public hearing. Jamie seconded, or Chris seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed. I'll entertain a motion in the case, Al.
Case number twenty twenty dash forty-four, Andrew and Karen Plotner through their agent, Brian Wall of Cape Coastal Builders has applied for special permit to demolish and replace a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the code of the town of Howard's twenty, three twenty-five dash fifty-four, table two, area regulation is set forth in NGL chapter forty, section six. The property is located eleven Hiawatha, map six parcel G five dash two in the RH one zoning district. Board has hereby grants a special permit having found that the applicant meets the requirements of the bylaws and the Gale case. Let's see, all works, excuse me, as the proposed project will intensify one or more existing nonconformities, will not create a new nonconformity, and will not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. All work will be performed in accordance with the plans submitted with this application. The special permit is granted subject to the following conditions, we don't have any conditions placed upon this, do we?
Yeah, I think we need the demolition restriction because of the tight neighborhood down there.
All right, there shall be no demolition exterior conditions on new landscaping during the period of June thirtieth to Labor Day in any year. During the life of the project, all construction vehicles shall be parked on the property and not on the public street or road.
I don't think they, I don't think that one applies, I think the first one covers it, Al. I don't think they have enough room to park on the property.
It is a condition of this approval that the violation of the terms and conditions of the special permit and may be enforced as violation of the Howard zoning bylaw pursuant to Mass General Law, chapter forty, section seven, and the Howard zoning bylaws as they may be amended from time to time.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion by the board? No discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, a unanimous. Thank you, Attorney Wall, special permit is granted, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, appreciate your time. Thank you, good luck.
Okay, so, as everybody knows, Jim Hilliard had to resign because of time issues. Well, I appreciate all of his loyal and hard work, he's been with us many, many years, I hate to see him go, but I have, as I said, nominated Brian and Chris, we now have Larry Valentine, I guess, back as our liaison, so I'm sure he will take that to the board at the next meeting or the one after, whenever he can get it onto the agenda. Clerk, we need a clerk, who's gonna be our clerk, at least for, at least until June when we have our next reshuffle of the board?
I'm willing to do it, Jamie and I had corresponded, and I'll do it.
Al's gonna do it?
Yes.
Okay, I'll nominate and make a motion that we appoint Al Donahue to be the clerk for the rest of this year until we reorganize, whenever we do so in twenty twenty-one. Can I have a second on that motion, please? Mr. Armstrong, he jumped on that one.
I noticed that.
Any discussion by the board? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, Al, congratulations, thank you. I'll send you the meeting protocol, we have two, one, now I gotta read all this statement from the governor because we're doing the remote, and then we have another abbreviated one, I'm planning no trips, so should not be an issue. The only other thing, if I weren't available, would be when Sheila had the decisions ready, you'd have to sign them as the clerk of the board.
I'd like to say something about Jim Hilliard. Not all of you have been around Jim for a while, but as most of you know, he was a very well-informed individual who had the patience of a saint. And Dave, through his good work, would always go and start to his left with Jim Hilliard a comment, and quite frankly, everybody else who sat to Jim's right was waiting to hear what he had to say, because he was that well-informed and a very astute gentleman, and I personally will miss him.
Yeah, I will too. Jim was still doing work as an active zoning lawyer and other work, and he knew a lot more about zoning than I do. I was never a zoning lawyer, I always hired a zoning lawyer because I think it's a very localized issue, like somebody like Attorney Crowell, who comes before the board regularly, and that we know when he tells us something, we can believe it, is important in zoning work, but I got a lot of good help from Jim. Before him, John, oh, I wanna say Brooks, but that wasn't, what was John's last name? Sheila, just flew out of my head in a senior moment here, he was another very active zoning lawyer, and he was terrific on the board, but he was on for a number, number of years, but finally decided he wanted to semi-retire and left. Anyway, thank you, Al, were those forms of motion helpful? I've gotta work them over again, I got them out kind of quick, there's a few typos in them still, but I think it just, I get confused when I make one, it just seems to me if we have a form of motion, it's a lot easier, and I'd like you guys, I don't want to have to do them all the time, I appreciate Al doing them, Dean Heterestat used to do them all the time, but I think we should all take a turn doing motions.
Oh, they're very helpful.
Those forms was quite helpful for me, I thought it was well done.
Okay, well, I'm gonna polish them up a little, and I'll resend them. Did anyone have any comments on the minutes of October twenty-eighth?
No.
No, well, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the minutes from October twenty-eight, twenty twenty, as written. Chris, you wanna make that motion?
I'd like to.
Chris moved, second, Jamie?
Okay, second.
All in favor of approving the minutes? Aye, approved unanimously. Does anyone have any new business, any further business?
I just have one question, it was an email I sent out, and I'm not sure I explained it well enough. On this, on the law- it well enough. On this, online for the town, there used to be a link to what was called Maps Online, and it was something where it would show every property in the town of Howard. And you'd click on that property, it would pull up the owner and a lot of ownership information about that property. For instance, behind us, there was a case several years before I joined the board on a sand pit behind, in that new conservation area, Howard Conservation Trust area. Areas like that would indicate who the owner is of those properties, not always on streets. And that link on the Howard website seems to be broken. So that right now, there is no way that I can find to get information on ownership. I mean, Google Earth was, when you mentioned Google Earth, Dave, that's great for finding the location of the property on the street and indicating where it's located and seated, but it doesn't tell you the, I guess, the legal information about ownership, et cetera, of those.
No, no, it does not. Shaila, I don't know, do you have any? I've got no knowledge of this.
I don't know. I have, that's the first I've heard about it, but the people who manage the website, you would go through on Jamie, and I can't think of her last name right now, and Caleb Ledoux. If you send me the information that you're talking about, I'll forward it along to the right people. They're the ones that do the changes and corrections on the website.
All right. It may be something, we don't contract with this company anymore. Dennis, you can get on Dennis' bill, but not Howard, so.
It could be. I don't know.
I'll send it along. You'll find out. It was very helpful for this board and other things, actually.
All right, we'll send the info to Shaila, and she can, who is it? Was it Jamie? Jamie Goodwin?
Goodwin. Gosh, why couldn't I think of her name? Jamie Goodwin or Caleb Ledoux. They'll usually go on either add or fix or check or whatever, but if it's something where we've grown beyond the contract, then, you know, there's nothing they can do. But they might know.
I'll send it along.
Okay. Anything else? Merry Christmas to all. We will meet again on Christmas 47. Shaila says we probably will have eight or nine cases in addition to the one we continued. But what we'll do, I told her, we'll do the same thing we've done before with that number. I'll, when we open the meeting, I'll advise everyone, you know, got a lot of cases. We will go to 10:00 PM, and what doesn't get heard gets carried over till the next month. And if anybody doesn't want to wait around, we'll give them the right to, you know, tell us and go over to the next month. The last time we had that situation, I think three, at least three people went over to the following month, and then we had a much more workable agenda. So we'll see how it goes. And there might not be, you know, cases, they pull them out, they ask to be continued. We'll see how many we finally get and handle it as we always have. So thanks, everybody, and have a great holiday. Stay well.
Good day, everybody. Merry Christmas.
We need a motion. We need a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, vaccine is coming. We just have to hang on till the middle of next year. Al, move to adjourn.
I'll make the motion. The meeting adjourned?
I'll second.
Chris seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 8:54 PM. Thanks, all.
Bye-bye, guys.
Yes.
All right, thanks for being the clerk, Al.
Definitely. Thanks.
Somebody else the next time. Meeting for all.